Hopefully Gary will be here soon. So we'll call the Commissioners' meeting to order at 10:01. All those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Intervene in the law, but for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
All right. Do we have any public comment for items not appearing on today's agenda? Mostly seeing people who are here for agenda items, so move on. Any additions to the agenda from the board? No? All right. If the meeting minutes are good, we'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the meeting held on May 15.
A couple of seconds. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the meeting held on May 15. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. And we have Quentin from our Aging Department here to talk about the Farmer's Market Voucher Program kickoff, and I know that is a very popular program, so if you could give us the details, Quentin.
Sure. So as of June 2nd, we will have vouchers available for the farmer market. We are hoping to get our delivery either today or tomorrow with the vouchers. It is funded through the Department of Agriculture, and the Department of Aging actually, or the Office of Aging then runs the program for the Department of Agriculture. This year, we're looking at five vouchers. Each voucher is $5. So it's a total of $25. Last year, it was more, and that was because of the American Rescue Act money. This year, they're reverting back and to $25 total per person. There is the Household Income Guidelines, and also, if you are getting the vouchers in Center County, you must be a resident of Center County. The food is anything that is grown in Pennsylvania, so you cannot get pineapple with your vouchers. It has to be something that is grown here. On our website, we do have where we're going to be at and what locations, and we're trying to go to every area of Center County so that we can reach out and then people can have a short distance to the distribution. We also will be doing them here. We're going to be on the first floor, and we're going to be on the second in room 146, the third, room 116, and the fourth, we will be in room 144, where we will have volunteers and staff who will be helping people in distributing the vouchers.
What is the age minimum?
You must be 60 years or older.
All right. So 60 years or older, meet income guidelines, but $25 a vouchers for the farmers markets. Unfortunately, due to the shortage of meeting rooms in the Willbank, you've kind of got to bounce around on the first floor for those first few days of June.
Yeah, we'll make sure that everybody gets where they need to go.
Okay. Wonderful. Any additional comments, Commissioner Concepcion?
It sounds like a great program.
When do the farmers markets actually kickoff?
So everything is, starts June 2nd, so I'm not sure exactly. Each farmer market has different, but if you go on our website, there's actually a link that you can type in the area where you live, and it'll show you the markets that are available that have farmers who are qualified.
Another one in State College.
Boltsburg was open already on Tuesday outdoors.
Yeah, Boltsburg was open, and I know the State College Borough one, I think on Burrows was open, so.
The North Atherton one is open.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're not distributing the vouchers till the 2nd because you can't use them until June, so that's why we're distributing them then.
All right. So it looks like the timing's all going to work out.
As long as they come in the mail today or tomorrow.
All right. Any questions from the press on this one? No? All right. Well, thank you so much, Quentin. Being an announcement, we don't need to vote on anything, but we appreciate what you and your staff are doing.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our proclamations, we have two today. Proclamation 28 proclaiming May as Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander, I believe the abbreviation is Apida Month in Center County, and we have Nalini, and is it Philini?
Philini.
Here. Why don't you come to the podium and give us some background about the Apida Month nationally?
So, good morning, and thank you for having us here. As I've mentioned before, it's really something else to come to Center County government because you're one of the governments that always remember that these proclamations are here and, you know, working with Erin together this year. We feel really welcome. So want to say thank you, and both Dr. Philini Rupa Singha and I, we are members of the Pan Apida Circle. And before I start my comments, I do want to introduce Dr. Rupa Singha. She has been, she's a new member of our community, has been in State College for about a year, and is originally from Sri Lanka, and is the inaugural Apida Coordinator at the Paul Roots and Cultural Center. And it's been really amazing to have a partner at Penn State to work with. So some of you might have come to our third Apida Fest, where we had a real town gown collaboration with the Penn State Apida Caucus students, who now had Dr. Rupa Singha as a guided mentor, because Paul Roots and Cultural Center has been a partner since last year, but now we have someone really spearheading that work. And also, I think we had a partnership with the Borough of State College and the Pan Apida Circle, of course. So it was tremendously successful. We think about 500 people had come through, and the students had a spring festival theme. So I really, really am happy to have Dr. Rupa Singha here again, kind of representing, you know, the students and that perspective. This is the first time she has been at any of our proclamations, so just want to introduce her to all of you. And so I just want to take a few minutes to talk about the theme of this year's Heritage Month, and it's actually a legacy of leadership and resilience. And just a few remarks on that. It was the Federal Asian Pacific American Council that chose this theme, and chose it so that we can then pay tribute to the trailblazers and leaders from this community whose resilience and courage have paved the way for future generations. These pioneers, and I'm speaking to what the Council said, these pioneers often facing insurmountable barriers have not only demonstrated exceptional leadership, but have also risked much to usher in change. Their stories of perseverance, of overcoming doubt, discrimination, and the weight of societal expectations serve as inspiring reminders that resilience is a cornerstone of our community. Each breakthrough they achieved has laid the groundwork for those who follow, encouraging the next generation to dream boldly. And I would like to take a few minutes of your time to share some of these examples of leaders of our shared history who have done this for all of us, and have actually defined what it means to be American today. The first one is Wong Kim Ark, born in San Francisco, California in 1870, who sued the federal government when he was denied reentry on the grounds that he could not be a citizen. And the reason they said that was because his parents, though legally here, could not be citizens because the United States had passed the Chinese Exclusion Act. The Supreme Court's seminal decision in this case on March 28th, 1898, was that citizenship could not be denied to anyone born in the United States, and this case is the foundation of birthright citizenship even today. Lieutenant Susan Ann Caddee, born in Los Angeles in 1915, prevailed against anti-Asian sentiments during World War II to become the first Korean-American woman in the United States military, and the first female Navy gunnery officer. Congressman Dalib Singh Sound, who came from India in 1920 as a graduate student to study mathematics at the University of California, Berkeley, and then became a farmer as no one would hire an Asian as a professor. He then successfully lobbied to end restrictions to citizenship for Indian and Filipino immigrants, became a citizen, was elected judge, and eventually became the first person of Asian descent elected to Congress in 1957. He was a person of Sikh origin, followed, practiced the Sikh faith, and he was a big supporter of civil rights for all Americans. Congresswoman Patsy Mink, a lawyer who was born in Hawaii, was the first Asian woman, Asian American woman elected to Congress in 1965. She advocated for Asian Americans, women, children, even when it was at a potential risk to her political career. And she fought both sexism and racism. I mean, her story is amazing. Former Secretary of Transportation Norman Mineta overcame racial injustice as a child of Japanese immigrants in a World War II internment camp to serve in the US Army, Congress, and the cabinets of Presidents Bill Clinton and George W. Bush. These were just a few people, but then all of us also know about architect Maya Lin, who designed both the Vietnam Memorial and the Civil Rights Memorial. Indian-American Kalpana Chawla, the first South Asian American to go to space, who came here as a graduate student in aerospace engineering, and who later died in the Columbia disaster. Bangladeshi-born Muslim American graduate student Faslu Rahman Kar is the one who discovered the technology to build tall buildings, and is called the father of the modern skyscraper. And of course, you know, we know about Hotmail, YouTube, and 95 Marks masks, and so many other technologies that were invented by Asian Americans. And so, you know, with 7% of Center County residents coming from this community, there's a lot happening. This is our collective history, and a lot of contributions happening now, both to the local experience as well as global. I recently attended a celebration for Penn State Professor Jai Nendra Jain, who had just got the Wolf Prize in Physics, and this was just about a month ago. And many who get the Wolf Prize actually go on to win the Nobel Prize. So I just, you know, I think this is an opportunity for us. It's the 250th anniversary of our democracy here, and it's a great time to begin to learn this collective history, and I know this, you know, here we do respect it, and I hope all of us can learn, not only now, but throughout the year, about our common history and this rich diversity. And again, I, you know, I want to thank Philini for being here as part of strengthening all of the things that we are doing here. Thanks to Philini being at Penn State this year for Asian Heritage Month. We had a panel discussion, we had many other celebrations, so more to come from Dr. Rupa Singha. Did you have?
Yeah. Thank you very much, and it's a great honor to be here. This is my first year in State College, this Center County, and I'm very happy to see the welcome and the feeling of that belongingness that I got when I got to the Center County and State College. And I'm very happy to serve, like, be that bridge between Penn State and the community to community, especially supporting the Apida Asian Pacific Islander Desi-American community living in the Center County. So thank you very much for the opportunity. We, as Apida community, we are very thankful for you all, and thank you very much, Nalini, for bringing me here, introducing me to this community. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming, Nalini, and welcome to Center County, Philini. With Asia being the largest continent and the Pacific being the largest ocean, that is a whole lot of people, and as you mentioned, even here in Center County, due in part to the university, that's over 10,000 of our roughly 160,000 citizens come from Asia and the Pacific Islands and the Hawaiian Islands. So lots of accomplishments, I'm sure many, many more amazing feats in the future. So thank you again for coming, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, thank you for highlighting these stories that really indicate the extent to which Asian Americans have been part of America's history, really from the beginning. And especially in the 1800s, we saw a great deal more immigration across the Pacific into California, and they were an important part of settling that part of the country so for, you know, now many, many generations. Yeah, I think, as I've mentioned before, of course, my husband's parents are from the Philippines, and so they're part of that Pacific Islander heritage, and, you know, many people who came here, you know, during the course of the 20th century from these countries, there was a connection because of US military bases abroad, and those connections, and often, in their cases, marriages that led to them coming over here, because my husband's aunt married a US serviceman who was stationed in the Philippines, and that was how the rest of the family ended up coming over. So there's really just so much interconnection, and, you know, this history that links our countries over many, many years, and we're just so grateful to have such, you know, vibrant immigrant community here in State College and Center County, and everything that comes with that, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Concepcion. Commissioner Dushon?
Well, you know, you mentioned being a recent resident of Center County, but our heritage in this county goes back generations, and I think, I think we have to remember, you know, the many contributions and the very many good things that have happened in our community because of folks that have lived here for generations. And, you know, I think of, you know, European descent people, we've been here maybe a couple hundred years. Well, I would guess that there were probably folks from the Pacific Islands and from Asia that have been here, maybe not quite as long, but I would almost guess well over 100 years. And I think, I think the folks are ingrained in our community, and we really welcome you, and it's an honor to just say thank you for, you know, bringing these thoughts forward. The history lessons are pretty important, and I think, I think that's what we're here to remember and to learn from, and to honor. And we really appreciate that, and look forward to seeing what events you have coming up and spending more time. And tell us a little bit about how you went, how did you, how did you end up at Penn State? That's, I'm just curious, since you're the new kid on the block.
Yeah, so it's sort of a long story. So I, my background is in material science. I was a faculty for 10, about 12 years, and then I made this shift because I had, like, I did my graduate studies at the University of Iowa, and then I went back to Sri Lanka, served in Sri Lanka for about eight years, and came back to Bucknell University in Union County, and I was there as, attached to the Department of Chemistry, and then moved to State College. And then, so I, though I was in STEM fields, my passion was always to work with people, to do things, and to like develop programs for student success, things like that. And then, so then I saw this, like, I was recruited for this inaugural position, so the whole idea of this position was to make that, like, Penn State, we have a lot of student, like, student community that is, that is coming from different backgrounds. So like me, there are four coordinators at the Paul Robinson Cultural Center for each community that we have at Penn State, namely Latino, Black community, Indigenous community, and the Apida community. So I'm here, I'm serving the students who belong to my community, and also, we are doing a lot of programming to make the bonding between these communities, so the cross-cultural connections, making the, like, making that whole Penn State environment a welcoming place for students, especially those who are coming from international countries because they are new here. I have gone through that experience as an international student in the US, so it was challenging, so we are trying to make a comfortable place, a place that makes them feel like they are welcomed and belonged. So that's basically what I'm doing at Penn State, and I'm very happy to be in Center County because I see that welcoming, the diverse environment that we have here. Thank you.
That's a pretty broad background of experience that you bring. That, that's amazing. Well, we welcome you and look forward to working with you, and if, I think I speak for the entire board, if there's anything we can do to help, please let us know. And I really appreciate you being here this morning.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And as always, you're welcome, anytime.
And thank you for that question, so you could get to see what, you know, the work that Philini is doing.
Makes me feel somewhat inadequate in my life experience. But that's okay.
Well, Steve, you are the longest-serving commissioner in the street of the county.
Well, yeah, but that being said, I don't have the breadth.
Quite a pathway.
Yeah, that's a pathway to getting here, so congratulations. Welcome again, so thanks.
Well, stay up there, but unless there's anything else, I think we can move forward with adopting the proclamation.
I'll move to adopt proclamation 28 of 2025 as Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Center County.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to adopt proclamation number 28 proclaiming Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Center County. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Come on up, and Erin, you're getting the photo?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Absolutely. You're welcome again.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Looks like you're giving money.
Yes, they are. Okay. Center on, center on, building one on the map. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So good to meet you.
Thank you so much.
Always good to see you.
Pleasure as always.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and now for proclamation number 29 proclaiming May as Motorcycle Awareness Month in Center County, and I have done, it's TJ and others are coming up, so approach the podium, and we appreciate all of the charity fundraisers and other community service events that our various motorcycle groups do throughout the county.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I'm TJ Watson. I'm the chapter coordinator for Centerline Riders, chapter of A-Bait. A-Bait's nationwide, but in the state, we got, I think it's like 41 chapters throughout the states. And what A-Bait stands for is, we're an alliance of bikers aimed towards education. So one of the things that we do is, we've got about 30 classes under our belt in the last calendar year that we go to high schools and go to the driver's ed, and we, you know, we put on some videos and some, and we, you know, talk to them, let them look at motorcycles and stuff like that, so. And so with May, we're working on motorcycle awareness because the bikes are coming out, but it's all summer long. We're going to be out all summer long, so. But yeah, some of the other things that we do, every year, we have what we call the Purple Ride, and that's also in memory for Hal and Natalie Hallock. And, yeah, so we do, we do a fundraiser for Salvation Army, and we do a toy run, so roughly about half a pickup load of toys, brand-new toys for kids that we drop off, and, you know, money ranges about an average of 1,500 bucks that we make for that day, so that's what we do. Also, in August, we got another fundraiser for veterans coming up in the beginning of August, so. But Bobby, he's the head of the, he's the head of the O.S.A.L., Operation Save a Life, so that's when we go in and we talk to the, to the students that are getting ready to get a driver's license, so we talk about that. The other person we have here, he's our treasurer, Michael McGrath, he's a longtime rider, so. But yeah, so we're, we're just here for the proclamation to make motorcycle safety awareness for the month of May and June, July, August, September.
The whole year.
It's all the way.
There you go.
Till it gets, till it gets slow.
Till the snow flies.
Yeah, so. I don't know. Any, any questions for us, what we do?
Well, we appreciate very much your coming here today, and obviously, there are probably several thousand Center County residents who love getting out on their motorcycles, touring the county and the surrounding counties, all the beautiful scenery and the amazing restaurants, and brew pubs, and distilleries, and cideries, et cetera, and while you're out there doing poker runs and whatnot to raise funds for a broad variety of local charities. So great to have you here today, and hopefully, while people are looking out for the motorcycles, they'll also look out for regular bicycles and Amish buggies and scooters, and a broad variety of other vehicles that do share the road a bit with cars.
Well, in our chapter of Center County, we're, we hold about, they fluctuate a little bit, so between 90 and 100 members is about what we run all year long. Through the state of Pennsylvania, we're just a tick under 6,000 total, so I'm not sure what the nation number is, but, you know, not, not, I don't think every state has A-Bait, I'm not sure, but, so.
Wonderful. Commissioner Concepcion?
Yeah, well, thanks, Steve, for being here, to highlight this, and really the importance that, you know, all year long, for sure, but this time of year, to keep your eyes on the road while you're driving, and give motorcyclists and bicyclists a wide berth as you're passing to, so that you're not taking any risks with anyone's safety, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you know that we're in the motorcycle safety business?
You are.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, we opened up our public safety training site for, for all sorts of motorcycle education classes. We've been doing it for years and years.
Yes.
And it's been pretty successful, and, you know, I don't know, I don't know where else they do that sort of thing, but, you know, when we have that big EVOX site out there, it's a real opportunity to make sure that people.
Yeah, and that's.
It's one thing to respect motorcycles, it's another thing to ride one. And riding motorcycles requires a lot of, a lot of due diligence, and a lot of, just almost, probably one of the, one of the skills you don't learn, like, instantly, it's something that you have to, you do have to learn over a period of time to be safe.
Yeah, you got to stay focused. Well, as, as we're riding, you got to stay focused, remember, you're looking for, you're on defense, you know, you're looking for anti-skid on the road, you're looking for, you know, a roadkill that's maybe there, potholes, and other vehicles, you got to look for a way out, too, so.
When I, when I first started to ride, one of the, one of the experiences I had was out at Rockview on the, on the Peiru side where the train track goes across, it doesn't go across parallel, it goes across at an angle. And I remember the first time going, coming up to that thinking, you know what, my front tire could skid right down along that rail, so I had to learn, it's like, okay, you want to kind of hit that straight on rather than at that hard angle. But there's a lot of things to motorcycle riding that, you know, beyond just other folks on the highway.
Yeah, you just see a little crack, I mean, you'll feel those, and where they tar the cracks, on a 90-degree day, that is very slick.
Oh, yeah.
If you're going around a turn, and you just, you feel it going out, and you got to be ready for that stuff.
And you mentioned anti-skid, you know, I see people out riding in April, and I'm thinking, man, a lot of bad things could happen. You got to be incredibly careful.
About 10 mile an hour slower than what you normally are, so.
We appreciate everything you do. Are you going to make it to the Belfont Cruz?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we will be down there right in front of the library.
Oh, great. Look forward to seeing you down there.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, fantastic. Good stuff.
Anything else to say?
No, just like to say, the base, the reason the Motorcycle Safety Course is free.
Yeah.
Re-bobby for that, and of course, for your registration, when you register, your motorcycle goes and connects to that course.
Oh, okay.
It's free, but when you do register, you do have to put money down, but you get that money back when you show up, because that way, it's, it's helpful for them to get a head count for the class.
Make sure people show up.
So that way, if you show up, you get your money back. If you don't, they're going to keep your money.
One, one other question. If, if you take your motorcycle test today, your driving test, do they still make you do that tight figure eight?
Yes.
All right. Now, when I did it, I did it on a little tiny motorcycle, so how do you do it, like, on a, on a big twin, you know, like, you know, how do you, how do you do that? Does it fit?
It'll fit. They'll give you, they're a little generous, they'll let, they'll let you go out of the line a little bit on a bigger bike, and that's what I took my test on, was a big bike, and, and also, you're not supposed to put your foot down, there was one time I did put my foot down, and he's like, oh, you're good, so.
All right.
Some of the police, motorcycle riders, do the tight figure eights on this.
Yeah, because I had a little Honda 100, and I thought that, that would, that would work better than anything bigger.
Well, during, during the Pennsylvania Motorcycle Safety Course, the first course to obtain your driver's license, they provide a little 250cc motorcycle.
That's what I'm talking about.
But all these courses are free, there's four courses. The next course is the intermediate, and you bring your own motorcycle. That's when you get to do the figure eight on your own motorcycle, and it's just to sharpen your skills. And then they have the ARC, the Advanced Riders Course, and now they have a three-wheel course as well, so.
How do you do, how do you do that tight, that tight figure eight on a trike?
Well, I, no, never tried it.
Just ask. All right, well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
Unless there's anything else, I think we can take a motion?
I will move that we adopt proclamation 29 of 2025 to proclaim May 2025 Motorcycle Awareness Month in Center County.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to adopt proclamation number 29 proclaiming May as Motorcycle Awareness Month in Center County. in Center County. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. We'll come on up and we'll, is that the proclamation?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Look forward to seeing you next month.
See you here again next year.
Are we okay?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Got us all in there?
Yep.
All right. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks for coming. See you next year.
Yes.
See you again.
Very soon. I'll be seeing you down in downtown Belfont.
All right.
We'll be there. I imagine it's June already.
Weather doesn't quite
Yeah, it doesn't feel like June. Maybe like October.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe a warm October. All right, now we will move on to bids and proposals. And Jonathan has a proposal involving moving to the new community services building.
Yes, good morning. I'm asking for your approval of a contract with On Demand Services LLC in the amount of $64,049.91 for moving services to the community services building. They will move all county offices that are moving into that building, both from here at the Willow Bank Building and at Summit Park.
Great, and I, I do hear it came in a little under the budget number, so we're pretty happy about that.
Correct, it was approximately half of what we had budgeted.
Ooh, even better.
Great.
Wonderful.
Yep.
Commissioner Concepcion, any comments or questions?
No, just, it sounds like this was a company that had the experience that we were looking for as well.
Yes, they specialize in government moving. They have moved the Social Security Office, IRS, numerous offices like that. In checking references, they have a very high recommendation.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Dershon?
I was gonna defer to the folks that have all the expertise in moving out of that building. We're gonna repopulate it again, so pretty excited. You have to come and, come and, come and visit it with us when we, we have an opportunity to show it off a little bit.
We're looking forward to the open house with the staff.
Yeah, well, we'll get you in there maybe a little bit, a little bit ahead of the public view so you can admire it. You probably will not recognize a lot of it.
Yeah.
So, but it looks really nice.
It's been a real transformation.
Looking forward to seeing how this comes together. Well, thank you, John.
All right, well, the contractors have been doing a wonderful job and looks like we're moving forward, so this is tremendous.
Yes, we are currently on track for occupancy June 13th.
Oh, very good.
Okay. Then I will make the motion to approve the contract with On Demand Services LLC for the community services building moving services.
I will second that. We have a motion and a second to approve the contract with On Demand Services LLC for the community services building moving services. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Now, moving into contracts, John has a capital project item for us.
Good morning, Commissioners. Before you, for consideration is the approval of the purchase of the existing solar array at the Center County Correctional Facility in the amount of $567,411. The array is owned and operated by Center County Solar Partners LLC. Currently, the county purchases the energy that the array produces and the original energy savings was estimated to be roughly 1.6 million over the 25-year lease. As part of the contract with the system owner, the county has the option to purchase the system outright at certain times throughout the contract period. And the first of which is this year. The original estimated savings to the county, if it chose to purchase the system this year, was 1.9 million. However, several estimated data points have proved to be on the, on the conservative side. The system is providing all of the energy that the correctional facility needs and there's a slight surplus that we, we sell back into the grid. Traditional grid power costs are outpacing original estimates, which equates to greater savings via the purchase of solar power. And the sales of the renewable energy credits generated by the array remain strong. So if the county were to choose to purchase the system outright this year, its estimated savings would jump from the earlier stated amount of just under $2 million to over 4.1 million.
Oh, my goodness.
In energy savings over the initial 25-year timeframe. So if there are any questions relative to that, but staff is in support and recommend that you consider the approval of the purchase of the existing array at the correctional facility.
And the system is under warranty for
25 years, yeah.
Yes, so.
Except for the inverters, there's essentially no moving parts.
Right.
Well, that's absolutely tremendous, John. Obviously, electric costs going up substantially is, is not a great thing, but it is more than doubling our expected savings. And we'd like to thank Richard in finance for running all the different numbers for us. This appeared to have the best payback of, I think, the three different options that were available.
Yes.
So, thanks to Richard for doing the background work and yourself and our solicitor and our prior administrator, Margaret Gray, for all their work on this. Comments or questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
Yeah, just, you know, like as we're looking at what needs to be a diverse energy future, it's good that for Center County to have its own, it was advantageous to sit, to, you know, finance the construction of this and it's, you know, clearly had a much greater return on investment than we initially thought. And going forward, you know, it just protects us from any volatility in the energy markets than we have our own array that's gonna make a predictable amount of power. And we found that it's more than is necessary to actually power the correctional facility. So we're getting some extra revenue from the, from the use of that array there. Really a positive thing, so.
Mr. Dershon?
Well, first of all, what are the, do we know how much the energy credits are worth annually? At least what they are today?
So we get somewhere between $35 and $40 per rec. And annually, let me see here. So in 2023, it generated $116,000 in renewable energy credits. And obviously, those, that number will go down slightly as the system ages because the system will slightly
Minutely, but you're still talking about 100 grand a year, so.
Well, it's 1.4 million over 25 years.
Yeah, but I'm just doing, I'm just doing some math. In six years, this thing pays for itself just by the renewable energy credits alone.
Yeah.
And the, the other thing is this, this facility runs 24/7. It's not, this isn't an office building. So literally, it generate, the, the, the power generated there and the power requirements of that facility are pretty substantial. So I think it makes complete sense to, to purchase this and take advantage of the, of the money that this, this system generates, so.
The system has bifacial panels too, which means that it actually generates electricity by the light that bounces off of the ground. So when, you know, if there's any, you know, reflectivity that comes up, it actually
It's when there's snow, yeah.
Yes.
That's good.
Good.
Yeah.
Perfect. Now, it makes, it makes financial sense to do this.
This is This is a win.
Yep.
All right. Unless there's any questions, we'll take a motion?
I'll move to approve the purchase from Center County Solar Partners LLC for the solar array at the Center County Correctional Facility.
I will second that. We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase from Center County Solar Partners LLC for the solar array at the Center County Correctional Facility. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Now, moving on to some commissioner items, got an important one here. We have an agreement of sale between the County of Center and Center Care, Inc. for just under seven acres of land in College Township. And we have a big crew here today to help us talk about that. I've got Carl, Steve, Betsy, Andrew, and I have Larry on here, but
He wasn't able to make it.
He wasn't able to make it, okay. So I'm assuming maybe for better video, shall we have him sit next to Steve?
Yeah, sure.
I think you all know he doesn't bite, so.
Yeah, well, I'll even give you my chair so you can I guess Steve's not coming up?
We'll leave Steve back there.
Okay, well, in case you don't have enough chairs.
Thank you so much for coming and this was, I think, over a year, maybe closer to two years of negotiation back and forth. But it was part of the $2 million county contribution towards Center Care to help you write your finances and allow you to, enough runway to be raising charitable donations to cover the fact that you do a lot of charitable work there. So do I hand it over to Betsy at this point, or Carl, Andrew?
Andrew, go ahead. I think
So as Commissioner Higgins had mentioned, this is a part two of a three-part proposal with the, with the commissioners. What first was the grant, we visited a couple of months ago and I got the first step of the grant and really kicked off our campaign for Center Care from the community as a call of action to, again, look for support from the community for a Medicaid facility in the area, the largest Medicaid facility in this area. And as we spoke at the last time we met with you, that we're underfunded by Medicaid and with the changing things in the government and Medicaid in the air right now, it's a continued support from the county and the community and these things that we're looking for. We are excited to announce that we have 100% board participation in our fundraising, 100% in key employee participation for, and have gone above what we had expected to get from those individuals. We had a great turnout at Center Gives for our volunteers since we have met with commissioners last. Our volunteer program themselves have had more volunteers look out for us as well. So those are things that we're still looking for from the community as we call to action again for neighbors, supporting neighbors to donate if you can. Every dollar counts. You know, $10 adds up every time. $5 adds up as we've seen through the Center Gives campaigns. And we really look forward to that support. Again, the support from the commissioners to buy this piece of land and then the continual growth for the third round of the grant when we come back to hopefully meet all the, all the requirements in the grant and when we are here to receive that final check. But we really appreciate the support from the commissioners, from the community that have supported so far. For our neighbors who are, have been able to come out and volunteer, we appreciate that. And for anyone who's on the border of thinking about volunteering or about donating, we'd love to have you do either of those. You're more than welcome to reach out to us at the facility. Ask for Steve Miller, myself, Andrew Nogal, or any of our key staff and talk to you about ways to donate and what that money goes towards in the facility.
Wonderful. Betsy, your chair, you've been there a long time.
I have been there a long time, yes. So has Carl. Because we believe in the mission of Center Care and what we can do for the county, the residents of the county. When we went from county to nonprofit in November of 2013, the board's commitment to Center County was that we would continue to provide care to the residents of Center County regardless of their ability. But when there was a need, we would be there for them. So this entire program is helping us to continue to do that. As Andrew said, Medicaid is a difficult process to work through. And the fact that we lose approximately $115 per bed per day on Medicaid residents and 70% at least of our population being Medicaid, that adds up real fast. And so your commitment to give us this additional support and reaching out and helping us to make this become a countywide understanding that it's simply because we want to meet the needs of every resident of Center County. Regardless, when they have a need, that's where they should be able to come.
Very well said, Betsy.
Just a little anecdote to show you that this all works. My wife and I had a dinner party last week with two other couples and we never bring up Center Care. One of the other couples made a comment. They said, "We saw a photograph of you getting monies from the county commissioners. Tell us about Center Care." And out of that, those two couples both want to come and take a tour, the neighbors supporting neighbors program. So it works.
Yes.
Wonderful.
It's a good conversation.
We'll let Steve strongarm them.
We appreciate the press's support.
We'll let Steve strongarm them whenever the time comes.
Well, Andrew indicated that the volunteers participated in Center Gives. And three years ago, when we first became a participant, we had 28 donors. The following year, we had 40. This year, we had 71. And so I feel very confident that that was a part of all of the publicity that's been happening
Very good.
since, so indeed, yeah.
Wonderful, and you qualified for the stretch pool, so
We did.
That will also help too.
We did very well.
And we'd like to thank you, Mark, for being one of those 71 donors. So we appreciate that.
Absolutely, yes.
You're welcome. I go through the list, it's like 234 charities now. I try to give at least several dozen of them a little something.
Every dollar counts and we appreciate that.
Oh, you're welcome.
We absolutely do. So the whole goal is to provide a home for those who need it when the time arises.
We'd like to thank the board and the employees, the many employees at Center Care for everything they've done over the last few years to keep the facility running smoothly. This portion of the commissioners meeting will focus on how our community cares for our seniors and the severely disabled as well. Many of your residents are under the age of 65. Nursing homes are more than just facilities, they're homes. They're places where those who are unable to take care of themselves receive the support they need. The dedicated staff in these homes work tirelessly with limited resources to provide comfort, dignity, and medical care. But the reality, as was just mentioned, is that many nursing homes are struggling. Some have closed. Rising healthcare costs, staffing shortages, and inadequate reimbursement are putting a strain on their ability to serve. That's why charitable giving is not just helpful, it's now essential. The current series of checks is all the support the Center County Commissioners can supply. This was basically the last of our American Rescue Plan money. Support from the community is now crucial. In Pennsylvania, 64% of nursing home residents rely on Medicaid, which does not cover cost of care. You were saying, Betsy, it's roughly $115 a day short. We do appreciate the state legislator, legislature being a little more generous. It used to be a bigger number.
Absolutely, it was.
Yes.
Yes.
And in Center County, Center Care is far and away the largest Medicaid skilled nursing facility. And as you mentioned, a minimum of 70% of your residents are on Medicaid. So when we give, whether it's $5 or $5,000, we're investing in better meals, safer environments, recreational activities, and enhanced medical care for the people who once cared for us. Donations fund life-enriching programs, mental health services, facility improvements, and more that Medicaid budgets just don't cover. This is not just about generosity, it's about responsibility. It's about ensuring that the people who built our communities are not forgotten. So I ask you today, whether it's individuals, businesses, or civic organizations, please consider a gift to Center Care. Every dollar makes a difference. Together, we can make our seniors and the severely disabled live with dignity, respect, and comfort that they deserve. Commissioner Concepcion?
Yeah, I think the size of the Center County Commissioners' commitment to Center Cares with this last $2 million of our ARPA money is an indication of the value that we place on making sure this facility survives to take care of future generations of Center County. And, you know, knowing that the vast majority of Medicaid beds that are available in Center County are at Center Cares because of your commitment to care for people who have run out of resources and now need Medicaid to cover what the skilled nursing care that they need. And that is something that can happen to any one of us if we have, you know, health conditions that lead to the need for long-term care. Most people do eventually run out of resources for private pay nursing care because it's just so expensive. And so, you know, this is the kind of care that almost any family in Center County may find themselves in need of at some point. And it's just crucial that we maintain the operation of Center Cares, that it continues to be, you know, the healthy, thriving organization that it is now for future generations. And, and the amount, the commitment of resources that we put towards this is an indication of the level of need and the importance of this organization to our community. So thanks for the work you're doing and, you know, I would really encourage Center County residents to include Center Cares in your charitable contributions when you're thinking about, you know, the organizations that you know need support in our community. This is a really crucial one. So, thanks. Thanks for all that you all do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Seven. Commissioner Dershon?
Let's talk about Medicaid for a second. How, how many Medicaid beds exist in Center County total? What's the sum total?
Off the top of my head, I think it's around maybe 300, 350. So, you can have Medicaid beds and not fill them with Medicaid residents. For example, Center Care is a dual-certified facility for Medicare and Medicaid. If you look at the Medicaid beds, we have 240 Medicaid beds. Unfortunately, with the new staffing ratios and everything else, we're maxed at a census of about 220, and about 70% of those residents are Medicaid residents. So, about 176 residents or 180 residents are Medicaid residents. So, not every facility that has a Medicaid license is using that license.
But there will be no more Medicaid beds?
Correct.
That's a finite locked-in number.
Correct.
And as our community grows, the need for those beds amplifies. And I think that's what people have to understand, the importance of those beds. Because if they go away, if they no longer exist, there is no place else for people to go whenever they need. And so many other counties have experienced this shortage of beds. And we are blessed to have you folks leading the charge to make sure that the facility stays vibrant. But it is an ongoing challenge, and I would echo my fellow commissioners, that we need to, as a community, as a county, as a region, respect the fact that we need to support Center Care as best we can, literally every week. Because the need is going to be omnipresent, and it's going to be ever-present for as long as the eye can see. Because I don't see any time in the future that our area is going to be lowering its population of seniors and other folks that need those services. And you folks have done such an amazing job. You know, when I think of the Center Crest facility, and I think of what you've created up there, and just the dynamic, you know, changes that have occurred, everything from dialysis, you know, providing dialysis to the rehab situation, which was almost non-existent in the old facility, which is now kind of the centerpiece of what you do up there. There are just so many elements that we can be proud of as a community. And really, it's a resource that, although a lot of people don't see it because it's not on their day-to-day regimen, the folks that do see it and need it rely on it. And I think we need to press that forward and explain to everybody out there that it is a key element of the success of our community. And I know your board has worked diligently to provide those services. And Andrew, as the administrator there, you've had your hands full, not only during the transition, but, you know, navigating all the waters through COVID and all the other challenges. So, we really appreciate everything that you've done. You know, there are other long-term care facilities in the community, but I don't think there are any that have the commitment to the indigent and the folks that really need your care like Center Care does. And you can be very proud of what you've done, and we're proud to support you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thanks. Anything you wanted to add, Steve?
House Bill 1310 did recently, did recently move to the Senate for the BAF, which is the Medicaid, the way the Medicaid dollars are put out. It's looking to put a floor on how low they can move the Medicaid dollars. So, we're looking forward to that being passed and hopefully help us.
Is that Pennsylvania?
Yes.
Could you leave 63 and 64?
As my spokesperson talked.
Lobbying efforts.
Yes.
We're looking for you to reach out to your legislators to talk for that before he heads on 63 and 64, to remind them to vote yes for it, because it helps all long-term care facilities in the industry to get a BAF on the Medicaid reimbursement.
Good.
Okay. So, for those who, another way to support Center Care's then is to reach out to your state senator, state house representative, and tell them to please support this floor on Medicaid reimbursement. Yes.
Questions from the press?
Are there concerns about the federal budget and the possible loss of Medicaid patients?
So, there is concern of the federal budget and what will happen with Medicaid, and we're watching that very diligently. As we work through that, we've met with our state representative, Paul Takak, very diligently to work on that, to make sure that he's aware of those concerns. Center Care is also part of PACAH, so PACA and PHCA, both trade associations for the long-term care industry, and have recently just participated in PHCA Summit Day down at the Capitol. About two weeks ago, we were there on the steps to cheer on and remind people of the long-term care industry and where we need the Medicaid to come from.
I think we asked last time, that Center Care is not operating in deficit right now?
Correct, it's not operating in deficit.
Okay. About how many patients? Are you at capacity, or about how many?
Our census right now is about 220.
Which is close to.
Yeah, 240 is our capacity, but with the staffing ratios, state staffing ratios and other ratios, we have to cap our census about 220 due to those regulations.
Right. The staffing ratios are pretty much what determine what our number of, for census can be. And while we're talking about encouraging the public, anybody who's thinking about going into healthcare, we guarantee you, you will never want for a job. So, if you're looking for your career path as we get ready for graduations across this time of the year, please consider it. It's incredibly difficult to get staffing at this point. So, that's a huge.
Center Care offers a full-paid CNA program in-house and a full-paid CNA program through CPI. So, we give back to the community, but we're partnering with other organizations such as CPI to make sure that we're helping them to survive, but also internally doing a class as well. So, we also have a scholarship program that after you've been with Center Care for a certain amount of time, that you can move on, and we will help you, assist you with your tuition reimbursement to help you grow as a nurse in the career.
Is there a limit how long a patient can stay?
A Medicaid patient can stay?
So, there's no limit on how long a Medicaid patient can stay. Usually, most of the Medicaid residents that come into Center Care are there for the remaining part of their life. We do see some go back home, but the majority of them are there for the remaining part of their life.
Thank you.
Tim, any questions?
Just to show you how crazy the whole governmental, not you three, but above you, the state and the federal government. We took over the facility, which is now going to be Community Services for Center County, in 2013. We had a plan to build a new facility if everything worked out by 2000.
23.
23. One of the reasons was that the government, the federal government, was mandating that that facility on Howard Street wouldn't be able to support the changes in construction regulations and things like that, if that's the right phrase. So, we had to build a new facility, and we're still losing $115 a day on each bed. So.
So, to Carl's point, so there's a thing called the Code of Life Safety. So, the Life Safety Code was changing, and we would have had to update the facility on East Howard Street, and it would have not provided any more services for the residents. It was really things behind the wall, like fire coating beams and things like that, that would have cost us around the same amount of money as to build a new facility. And the residents at Center County would have gotten anything extra.
You know that well.
And the other thing is, and I think people have to appreciate this, they wanted you to do that while the building was fully staffed and populated with residents.
Correct.
Which makes it almost impossible.
Correct.
Right. Yeah. We would have had to close portions of the building, and.
Which would have been untenable.
Correct.
So, as in many other sectors, we have federal and state regulations that make it, that add to the cost of what you do. Even though if they're, you know, maybe well-considered regulations for patient safety, they still add to the cost. And then, if the reimbursements are not keeping up with the rising costs, you really find yourself in a tight spot.
Skilled nursing care is the second-most regulated industry in this country.
Behind nuclear power.
Yep.
Right behind nuclear. Yeah.
As I recall.
You're correct. Yeah. So, yeah. To your point, there is a regulation for everything. Correct.
Oh, yeah.
But you've done an excellent job, and you've navigated some very tough waters through some very tough times, and we really appreciate that. And I think it speaks to your commitment and why the people of Center County should be committed to supporting you.
And it was alluded to earlier, but the demographics on this are only going to get tougher. In the next 25 years, the number of super seniors, that's seniors who are 85 and older, will more than double in Center County. So, there'll be ever-increasing need for Center Care. And obviously, as Commissioner Concepcion mentioned, after a relatively short period, most citizens in Center County, even being a middle-class county, cannot afford private pay, skilled nursing. Many of us will eventually rely on Center Care.
Correct.
Any additional questions? All right. Looks like we could take the motion and pull out the big check.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to move that we approve Commissioner Item 1, which is an agreement of sale between the County of Center and Center Care, Inc., for the amount of $600,000 for the approximately 13.483-acre parcel for the property located adjacent to Persia Road.
And I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement of sale in the amount of $600,000 for approximately half of a just-under-14-acre parcel in College Township. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. And then, Judge, should we hold the Pantera or take care of that now as well?
No, we can. As a part two to this is the consideration of approval of a proposal with Pantera Engineering for the engineering services to prepare subdivision plan relative to the acquisition of half of that parcel.
So, I will move that the Commissioners approve Item 2, which is the proposal with Pantera Engineering for the engineering services associated with the subdivision of the Center Care property.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve a proposal with Pantera Engineering for engineering services to prepare a subdivision of the property mentioned on the earlier item. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Well, thank you so much for coming. Don't go away. Let's pull this out. Have the Center Care members hold that. Two. Is that, looks in good order?
Thanks, Mark.
Why is the whole map? Come on over closer, Betsy. We'll have, I think we may have all three of you hold that. All right, let's hold the minute to let Steve get a shot, too. All right, and our news media is back. You guys good? Good funnel? All right. Thank you so much.
This is always take with us, right?
That's yours.
All right. We'll take care. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I think you can take the paper. I think we need to.
Yeah, I'll give you the backing back.
Thanks. Put that down gently.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Bill 1310.
1310. Okay.
All right.
Great.
Thanks. And now, we have Chris Schner to talk about an item in planning and community development that I think will be of interest to the Penns Valley region.
Good morning, and thank you. We have one, what's called memorandum of understanding on the agenda for today. But before I get to the specifics about the MOU for short, just want to give a quick reminder of what the MOU is that's being presented today. And it's a three-party agreement, and it's between a developer, township, and the county whereby the developer agrees to reimburse the township for the costs associated with the township engineers processing, reviewing, inspecting, and approving the engineering details of the plan. The board is not actually approving the land development plan itself, it's simply that agreement for reimbursement caused by the developer to the township's engineer. Now, with that being said, and what is the specifics about the MOU today, is this is a final land development, and it's for a Wawa at Old Fort Store, number 8251. And this is located in Potter Township. And where it's located is it's in the southwestern, what I say quadrant, of the intersection at 144 and 45. To give a sense, additional sense of where it's located, this is the existing Sheetz, as well as the Dunkin' Donuts store. And the site that's being developed is the former site of the Snappy's Convenience store. If we just zoom in a little bit more, you can see some of the existing buildings along Early Town Road, 45, and 144. If you take a left, you're going toward Bollesburg. This is the aerial photograph showing the former Snappy's Convenience store with the Sheetz. Now, the plan that Pantera has prepared is up on the screen. It's showing a footprint of 6,577 square feet for the Wawa Convenience store, along with the fueling pumps. This is the canopy that is going to be over top of the eight fuel pumps, or 16 actual stations for fueling. And what they're proposing to have the access, two different accesses. One is going to be along Early Town Road, and another one is going to be along Old Fort Road with stormwater management sort of along the southeastern side of the site being developed. And that's, in a nutshell, the Wawa MOU that's being presented today.
And that property is deeded to the Legion?
Correct. I don't have a, what you see in black is all the property that's owned by, it's called Smith Pletcher Home Association, but it's basically the Legion, and all the area in black is owned by the Legion, and it's going to be leased to an LLC that's going to develop the Wawa Convenience store.
Okay, thank you.
Am I correct in remembering, there were, with the Snappies, there had been a number of, like, recycling?
Yeah, scrap metal.
Right. Yeah. So, what is, do we know what's going to happen with the recycling?
There's actually, I think, two businesses on that site. One is, there's a shed, a place that you can lease or purchase a shed, and then there's the Center County Refuge Authority has some recycling locations. That's going to be some comments as part of the initial review that we're going to ask as well.
Okay.
Are they going to be allowed to stay, or are they going to be relocated on other? Not sure, but those are comments that a staff is already.
People in that area use that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Chris, it does appear that they're going to substantially rearrange the site. It looks like they're going to be tearing down all the current structures.
They are.
Moving them quite a bit.
That's correct. They are. They're removing all of the existing features of Snappies, and they're going to make their own canvas on this one, so to speak.
Wow. Do we have any rough idea of when this project might kick off?
No idea.
No idea.
No idea.
We're just following up on the contracts and making sure all the various groups get paid then.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. Questions from the press on this one? No? All right. Well, I think this is the first place in Center County where we'll have a Wawa and a Sheetz right across the street from each other.
They're still working on the Wawa and the Benner Pike. That'll be a similar situation.
Yeah.
Great.
It's going to be great for gas prices.
Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully so.
Yeah, we'll see.
Yeah.
Well, I will move that we add this MOU to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add the MOU to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Now, thank you so much, Chris. Appreciate it.
Have a great day.
You, too.
Thank you.
Now, Natalie will be covering an item for us for insurance, which I believe is coming in close to the last year's number.
Yeah, so I do have that increase that it is this year. So, PCOR has been our property and casualty insurer since 1993. They contract with 53 other counties and seven county-related entities. So, we, PCOR, our renewal is up with them. We did not go out to market, kind of due to the current market landscape that we are in. And so, our current renewal is at $552,263, which is an 8% increase. But considering the current market, they thought that was, you know, valuable for us. This covers our 150 autos, our $30.6 million payroll, and our $204 million property value assessment.
Oh, didn't know our properties were worth that much. That's amazing. And with insurance costs rising, I think 8% is probably about the best we're going to be able to do in the current market.
Current market, yes.
Yeah. Any questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
No. Got to have it.
Commissioner Dershowne?
No, 8% is, I mean, it seems extreme, but at the same time, it seems to be a values. We're in a quandary here.
Don't want to do without.
On behalf of Krista, she kind of explained some of this is based on some weather catastrophes. Pennsylvania has seen, as well as some pending, you know, lawsuits. Pennsylvania has seen, as well as some pending, you know, lawsuits that often occur over a year. But the weather, for sure, catastrophes that kind of some counties and other areas have been impacted on, made it a difficult market to have the increase that we did have.
I think the insurance market looks more national, and I, you know, when there impacts other areas, other regions of the country, unfortunately, we see the effects of that.
Yeah.
8% is, I guess, as good as it's going to get this year.
Then I will move to add this contract with P Corp. to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to add the contract with P Corp. to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. And now Leo, who's right there, has two items for us for children and youth.
Good morning. This morning, I am here before you to ask for your consideration for the approval of a contract with Hartz Learning Academy to provide child care services for foster children. The contract total was $10,000, with the being funded as follows, with the state at $8,000 and the county share at $2,000. And this would be for a period of July 1 of 2025 to June 30 of 2026. And the second contract that I have before you is a renewal with Keystone Adolescent Center to provide foster care residential services for both dependent and delinquent youth. This contract would be a total of $145,000, with the state's share being $116,000, and the county's share at $29,000, again for the period of July 1 of 2025 to June 30 of 2026.
Great. Thank you very much, Lea. And I'll use this as a chance to remind the citizens of Center County that we are always looking for foster families.
Yes, we are.
And we have a very strong support network here, a number of different staff within the county, and a couple of nonprofits we also work with to help people transitioning to welcome a child into their home. And while it's not expected, we do also have a very strong adoption tradition here in Center County.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Concepcion?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
I will move to add the Children and Youth Services Items 1 and 2 to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add the two items for Children and Youth Services to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. And then, oh, there's Julia with an item for Strawberry Fields.
Good morning. Before you is a contract addendum number one with Strawberry Fields Incorporated to allow for additional funds to provide early intervention services in the amount of $75,000. Early intervention has already surpassed last year's number at this time for referrals, so we definitely have the capacity to use this money. And Strawberry Fields is one of the primary folks who provide services for our early intervention youth.
Very much appreciate our partnership with Strawberry Fields. That covers multiple decades and millions of dollars per year, and they do great work with all ages throughout the county.
That they do.
Commissioner Concepcion, any comments or questions?
Just as early intervention services are really crucial, and the timing is everything. So making sure that we have adequate services available for kids in need is important.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
I'm good.
Thank you. I'll move to add the Contract Addendum Number 1 with Strawberry Fields, Inc. to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to add Contract Addendum Number 1 with Strawberry Fields to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Great. Thank you so much, Julia. And then I think we have Quentin up here again with some bylaw changes.
Yep. So I'm requesting consideration for approval for updates for the bylaws for the Center County Office of Aging Advisory Council. I would like to give special thanks to Connie Martin and Susan Hoover, who over several months, in several drafts, we went through the bylaws and really looked at some procedural changes, and also they looked at the regulations that are required and incorporated some of the procedures into our bylaws.
Great. Well, we appreciate their work. Bylaw changes are always difficult to do and involve a lot of different moving parts. Commissioner Concepcion?
Has Betsy Dupuy had a chance to take a look at that, the county solicitor? Do you think it's necessary, or?
I don't think so. We were just basically referencing the procedures already in regulation. And then there was just some minor on how the voting was done that we had to adjust due to the regulations.
All right. Okay.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
Then I'll move to add the updated bylaws for Center County Office of Aging Advisory Council to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to add the updated bylaws for the Center County Office of Aging Advisory Council to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Quentin. And please thank the Aging Advisory Board for all their work.
Will do. Thank you.
Moving on, we have kind of an average-sized consent agenda. I think we could probably just take a motion.
I will move to approve this week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve this week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Moving on to the check run. Commissioner Concepcion?
So the check that I'd like to highlight today on the check run is to the Center County Federation of Public Libraries. We are one of the funding partners for that organization. And with that, I would move that we approve the check run dated May 23, 2025.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the check run dated May 23. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. John, I hope you don't have an administrator's report.
Nothing to report at this time.
Nothing to report at this time. All right. Now we'll move over to Natalie and Chad giving some background on the Center County 225th anniversary, the beginning of our history. And thanks for your work on this. I got a quick preview, and as a commissioner, anyway, it was very exciting.
Sure. So as earlier this year, the board recognized Center County's anniversary of 225 years. And so today and throughout the end of this year, we're going to do and highlight some of our history and talk a little bit about, you know, how Center County and then Center County government itself has evolved over that time. And so to give a little bit of history, in February 13, 1800, the legislation passed the Act 2092, which created Center County from parts of Mifflin, Northumberland, Lake Homing, and Huntington Counties. So all those lands was pieced together and created our portion. It actually, right away, established our courts. It established how we elect officers, as they by law in the Constitution are entitled to. It mentioned our first tax levied with this in 1800. In 1801, we levied our first county tax in the amount of $1,755.55. Section 9 discussed about how our Board of Trustees, who were appointed, would then take and receive by grant, bargain, or otherwise, the payment of money and grants of land for the support of an academy or public school. And Section 10 discussed about holding election. So from the very beginning, some of our core work that we still do today was created with that act in 20, the Act of 2092. When Center County was organized in 1800, the population was 4,112. Based on the current in 2024, we are at 159,805. So the first Board of Commissioners were elected on October 22, 1800. John Hall, David Baer, and Matthew Allison served terms one, two, and three years respectfully. The Constitution in 1874 then changed it to three commissioners were elected for the period of three years. And then in November of 1902, beginning in 1911, our current structure, which is three commissioners, elected every four years thereafter. I think it's important to note, Chad's research, which we'll get to in a second, has noted that we've had 160 individuals serve on our Board of Commissioners. In our hallway, right around the corner, we have portraits of 25 of those commissioners, with the three current commissioners portraits making it 28 in our commissioner office. And so while we have the history of our photos when you walk into this building, we have the history of our government every day, every Tuesday and every other Thursday, with the Board of Commissioners serving in meetings. The work that they've done, those minutes and agendas, have been some of the work that Chad has helped put together that he's going to highlight on our county website.
Great.
Yes. Thank you, Natalie. So over the past year, we've digitized many of the minutes, going back to the earliest stages of county government, and in doing so, put together just kind of an overview, much of what Natalie described, of the county government. So you can find it here under Records Management. We have a link here to the Act 2092, which officially created County of Center. And then we have on here as well on the page, an online archive section. And so we've digitized meeting minutes and ordinances and various things, some of them going back to 1817. The earliest books, where commissioner books we're able to find were from November of 1817. So we scanned them all in and made them available on our website here, and they are...
That's some yellow paper.
It is. Yeah, the books are in good condition, actually, even the ones that, you know, this is what, 206, 207 years old now? So yeah, there's a mention of the commissioners at the time, and it goes Pat Schaefer and Moses Boggs.
All right.
Yeah. So a lot of, like I said, a lot of these resources can be found on our website.
Yeah.
And so as we continue into 225th year, you know, we'll look at other county departments and history. But, you know, we want the public, the members of our community, to know that our history is available for them to see and to experience, both in our, you know, on our website and as you walk through our buildings. And you see, I think it goes back to about 1940, our portraits, if I believe correctly. And so we just wanted to have the beginning of our history, start this opportunity to discuss it.
That's fabulous. I really enjoyed reviewing it earlier. And of course, Natalie, you're now channeling your father a little bit. It was a preeminent Civil War story.
Yes. I mean, I learned from the best, so I'm good with that. And Chad's degree actually is in history as well, so we've enjoyed this opportunity, knowing the work that records has put into this over the last year, to now be able to give this this year for the 225th anniversary.
I didn't know that, Chad. Talk history sometimes.
One of my favorite things, Center County in 1800, the shape of the county did not look like it does today. And one of my favorite references was, a few years back, had the opportunity to get down to Clinton County and celebrate, I think it was their 150th anniversary. And at that point, one of the fun things that I reminded them of is that a good part of Clinton County was formerly Center County. And they made it the shape that it is now because Lock Haven at one time was in Center County. And the, they created Clinton County out of a variety of different counties around it, including Center. And we had to remind them that we gave them some of the best of their county.
It's good.
Commissioner Concepcion?
Yeah, I think this is really important, like being able to keep these records for future generations. Like having them digitized is a critical way to preserve them. And I think future historians will appreciate that we've done this.
Yeah. Okay.
It's just pretty neat, too.
Yeah. Yeah. Any questions from the press on this history item? Well, thank you again so much. Look forward to hearing more next one.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the voter registration report, one of our 160 Center County Commissioners. Commissioner Concepcion?
Well, we have no voter registration report today because we are wrapping up the primary election results. So after, I think after we certify the primary, they will, again, start having voter registration reports. But the Sure Systems locked down for new registrations until after the certification, so.
Great. John, do we have any executive sessions to reporter hold?
No executive sessions to reporter hold.
All right. And our public meeting schedule, later today at 3:00 PM, we have a Board of Elections meeting. On Thursday, we have a Finance Committee meeting at 9:00, and a combined Board of Commissioners and Salary Board meeting at 10:00. And then Tuesday, June 3, a Board of Commissioners meeting at 10:00, a Board of Elections meeting at 3:00 o'clock. Any additional questions from the press?
Does the county have any plans for the land at Center Care?
Not currently at this time. Plus, I believe we're giving them roughly a gentleman's agreement. If they want to buy it back in the next year or two, if things go even better for them financially than planned, we'll let them buy it back at the cost.
When you figure the numbers with the solar array, is the numbers, the county spent 1.6, 1.7 million for the project originally?
Yeah.
And then now it's another 500,000. So that's like 2 million the county. Is that all figured in when you still say savings are on top of that? Is that...
Yes.
Yeah, that's over and on top of the cost.
Including maintenance as well. We've discounted the maintenance off of that as well.
But, you know, for example, when we started, I believe that facility had $120,000 a year electric bill, and we were hoping that the solar array would cover maybe $115,000 of it. But heck, we're powering the place fully with the solar array in the winter. And John, I think we've been receiving annually checks in the ballpark at 25,000 or 30,000 a year for the overproduction on the electricity. And the solar racks are coming in a bit above the initial forecast. And then with electric costs going up dramatically, as you're aware, Gary, our increase of property taxes every year, it's like a percent because we only get the extra property tax on new properties that are built or very substantial remodels. So if we can fix a major cost like electricity, that's what we prefer to do.
With this deal, is the county still looking to be part of the solar purchase agreement?
Yes, because that particular solar array does only power the correctional facility and a little bit of, say, the Willabang Building. We still have the remainder of the Willabang Building. We have the Center Crest Building coming online. We have a broad variety of other county facilities like the courthouse, where there's really no possibility of putting solar in that property area.
Does Mountain Nittany or other facilities have Medicaid beds, or is Center Care has the most in the county? Is that...
Center Care has far and away the most in the county. As they mentioned, there are a few other facilities that are licensed for Medicaid beds, but since even today you lose $115 a day on each bed, they don't offer those beds to the public. I believe there's one or two other facilities that might have as many as one...
Less than 10.
...or two dozen beds available, but they do actually fill. Otherwise, Center Crest, literally far and away, all of the active Medicaid beds in the county.
These are long-term beds. Obviously, you know, when it comes to the medical side of things, Mountain Nittany and other hospitals provide, you know, Medicaid, you know, facilities and care. But when it comes to Medicaid beds, for long-term care, Center Care is by far and away the largest in the whole, probably in the region.
So what happened?
All right. Good question, Gary. Thanks. Well, unless there's anything else, I think we can take that motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second. We have a motion to adjourn a second at 11:28. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned.